Good morning, everyone. We will get started with the zipper meeting at 9:34. We'll call it order. If we could have a roll call by staff.
Chairman Slusher. Vice Chair Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Arnett. Commissioner Dan Zeison. Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Lindblom. Commissioner Montoya. Commissioner Swart. Commissioner Arnett, are you on the line?
Okay, no problem. As long as you can hear us, Commissioner Arnett, and keep working on your audio. We'd love to have you join us on the other side, too, if you can. But I don't think we needed a quorum for this meeting, so we'll move on. And I'll go slightly out of order here. I apologize, I miss the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll invite everyone in attendance, if you'd like to join me for the pledge. Thank you very much. Now everyone's favorite part, I'll begin with some announcements. These are slightly different because today is a zipper meeting. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Open Meeting Law, ARS, Section 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to the meeting, www.mericopa.gov/Planning. With respect to the zipper process, meeting process, items will be considered in the order that appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the Commission. Anyone wishing to speak shall notify staff via email or raise your hand within the GoTo webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the Commission Chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. Okay, well, I think we have a relatively short meeting today, so we'll dive right into it with regular agenda item number one. I'd like to invite Mr. Cannon, would you like to present on item number one?
Thank you, Chairman and Commission members. Adam Cannon, Planning and Development. Today, staff is pleased to share information with the Commission on an update to one of our comprehensive area plans, the White Tank Grand Avenue Area Plan, which is one of the sub-area plans in the Vision 2030 Comprehensive Plan. To introduce some people here today, we have hired a consultant team in Logan Simpson, which includes Bruce Meehan, who's a project advisor, Terry Hogan, who's sitting right next to me, the project manager. She served with the county for 13 years and was Director of Planning at Buckeye and is now with Logan Simpson. She's the project manager. Then also Michaela Dumphy, who's listening online today, she's Assistant Project Manager. Logan Simpson's also hired subcult consultants, including Kim Lee Horn, on issues involving transportation and water, and Elliott Pollack and Company for Economic Development. The county team working on this project includes Tom Ellsworth, our Director of Planning and Development, Darren Gerard, our Planning Service Manager, Matthew Holman, Planning Supervisor, and I, who's the Area Plan Project Manager. We're also receiving communications team support at the county for advertising and marketing purposes. As this plan covers Supervisor District 4, Commissioner Hernandez is also advising our team on development of the plan. So first, I'd like to share with you the agenda today. We're going to be going over what is an area plan, the schedule and process associated with that, community engagement efforts, existing conditions, and then the next steps. When we get to the existing conditions section, I'll turn it over to our consultant, Terry. So to start, as you may know, the county has an overarching comprehensive plan, which is Vision 2030, which is a decision-making guide for accommodating future growth with broad policies for development in unincorporated areas. An area plan is a subsection of the comprehensive plan, accounting for unique conditions and needs for a specific area in the county and is smaller in scale. An area plan includes policies, a future land use map, and an implementation strategy with the ultimate goal being to support the Vision 2030 plan. Area plans are used in the development of plans, projects of federal, state, and county agencies. They're used in rezoning requests, which come before the Board. One of the things you'll notice is in our staff reports, there's a section that considers consistency with the plan in our recommendations for approval or denial to the Commission. The important thing here to note is that the plan serves as guidelines and policy, but are not regulations. On your screen, you'll see a few snapshots of the existing area plan, which was adopted in December of 2000. Since then, the West Valley has seen such significant growth and significant amounts of unincorporated areas have been incorporated into municipalities. As area plans or subplans within the broader comprehensive plan, they follow its general purpose to guide and accomplish coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the area of jurisdiction pursuant to present and future needs of the county. There are specific elements considered in the area plan update, including land use, transportation, environment, growth areas, open space, water resources, energy, and cost of development. Updating an area plan requires significant public participation, a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then ultimately adoption by the Board of Supervisors. In terms of project schedule, we started this initiative in the spring of 2023. Our consultant in that timeframe has developed an existing conditions document, and she'll be going over those with you today. Community engagement also occurs throughout the process, and our consultant is at work drafting working chapters of the plan, with the goal being to finalize the plan by November or December of this year. We've also undertaken significant engagement strategies, including the formation of a Plan Advisory Committee, or PAC for short, which is a broad group of key advisors to the plan. Those advisors include Luke Air Force Base. It includes State Land Department, at least from an advisory capacity through outreach interviews, several Maricopa County internal agencies, as well as the Home Builders Association. So we have a variety of stakeholders that serve on that committee. In addition, our consultant is holding individual outreach discussions with other key stakeholders, such as BLM, the State Land Department, other jurisdictions, and even community members from rural areas of unincorporated Maricopa County. The plan update is slated to have four community meetings, two of which have already been held. Our first meeting was virtual and was held on July 19th as an introduction to the plan. Last week, we held an in-person meeting at Sun City West, and we have another, a third meeting scheduled in person at Morristown Elementary on September 27. Following that third community meeting, we'll hold a final community meeting where we distribute a draft of the plan at a virtual meeting and receive additional feedback from the community in October. Members of the public are also able to participate in that in-person meeting and virtual meeting, and also in the hearings scheduled tentatively for November and December of this year to comment on the plan. Today's meeting, which is the zipper, is specific to the Planning and Zoning Commission to guide and direct us and give feedback to us on the plan development. One of the things I also wanted to show you is that we have a project website available at whitetankgrandav.com, which provides a lot of resources to the community and opportunities to participate, including online questionnaires, plan documents, maps, and opportunities to register for updates. We've also had significant outreach occurring through social media and eBlasts. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn the remainder of the presentation over to Terry Hogan, our Area Plan Project Manager.
All right, super. Thanks for that, Adam, and thank you, Vice Chairman Mitchell, and members of the zipper committee. Again, my name is Terry Hogan, I'm with the firm Logan Simpson. If you need, I'm at 51 West Third Street in Tempe. It's super exciting to be back here. I feel like I'm coming full circle. I spent 30 years in public service, as Adam mentioned, 13 years of it at County Planning and Development. So been retired for two years now, working in the private sector, and it was exciting to be able to win this job, work with the county again, and come back here and do this. So with that, like Adam said, I'd like to give you a little bit of a background on what we've been doing with the existing conditions. Always, as part of these long-range projects, it's important to take a look at the baseline of the area that we're looking at. And I'm going to say some things that the Commission probably already knows, some of the things I may say and address for members of the public that may be listening, just to give some background here. So we look at existing conditions early in the process. As Adam said, we have finished up the report. We have an executive summary posted on the website. We would encourage every member of the Commission and members of the public to take a look at that. There's another document that is 60, 75 pages long. If anyone is interested in taking a look at the full report, we will get that to you. So we look at, in existing conditions, we look at the regional and the historic context of the planning area. And I'm going to show you in a few minutes that this planning area has slightly changed from the existing 2000 planning area, and there's some reasons for that. But we're looking at the new study area or the planning area when we look at these existing conditions. So we look at the historical context, we look at the regional context, we're looking at a variety of different baseline demographics in terms of the types of folks who are out there, the population, the population projections, and so we're looking at those demographics. And then you can see on items three through seven, we look at basically every area or element that we're going to address in the area plan, we take a look at the baseline factors of those. So, you know, land use, growth areas, transportation and circulation, what's there? It gives us an idea of who we need to talk to in the process. For example, you know, transportation, we're talking to obviously MICDOT and ADOT. We look at natural environment, the open space, economic development for economic growth and development costs, cost of development, and public facilities and utilities. So with that, I want to, next slide, thank you very much. And some of this, obviously, the Commission knows, but for the purposes of the public, the orange shape, and I'm going to go into the changes of this and how those look in the next slide, but the orange shape is the White Tank Grand Avenue Area Plan Study Area. It's, obviously, you can see Maricopa County in the blue, it's in the northwest portion of Phoenix. It's approximately 727 square miles, which is 8% of Maricopa County, which, as you know, is over 9,200 square miles. So that's the area in context, and then next slide. So here, and I would encourage the Commission to take a look at this online, I'm going to go over this fairly briefly, and it may be somewhat difficult to see, but you can, I'm going to point out some lineage for you first. So the existing area plan is in the dotted kind of lighter blue line, and you can see that, and then you can see the darker blue line or black line is the study area that we're looking at here. And a couple other colors in there, you can see the white areas are unincorporated county, and then the gray areas are incorporated cities. Now, we know that this area plan, any county area plan or plan or regulation is not governing in the cities, but by necessity, and all the area plans, all eight area plans, cover the city areas. So they're in there, we're talking to the cities, we've had interviews with Buckeye, with Surprise, with Wickenburg, to talk to them about what they're planning in their areas, but this plan will not govern those areas, per se. So why the shape now? So you can see on the east side, there's a lot of, it's been reduced by only 27 square miles from the original plan in 2000, but the reason for that is for city annexations. So this is one of the, if not the fastest growing area in the nation. Some of these cities promote that they are the fastest growing cities in the nation, and by census count, of course, they are. So we looked at the annexations and the incorporated areas, and in Peoria, Buckeye, and Goodyear in particular, there was areas that we could retract in. So we did that on the east and southern side. Landmarks in this area are, of course, are the White Tank and the Grand Avenue retained. Also, Luke Air Force Base and the Auxiliary Base, very important to keep in this planning area. So that helped with the boundary on the southern side. And then on the eastern side, you can see there's a significant, I'm delicate when I say expansion or growth area, but that area moves into, all the way out to, excuse me, western expansion, that moves all the way out to Volter Mine Road, and then north to Wickenburg, to the incorporate area of Wickenburg. And that area currently is in the county's comprehensive plan, and it's designated as rural development area, and I'll show you that in a few slides as well. So when we look at that area, it's important to understand, and again, this helps us with who we're going to interview, who do we need to talk to, but land ownership. So we take a look at 46%, the gray areas are private ownership. A lot of that's in the cities, you can see that, and then 28% of that is in state holdings. So as this Commission is aware, Arizona State Land has a mission for highest and best use. Obviously, private developers or owners also look to highest and best use of their land, for the most part. So nearly 75% of the land is potentially ripe for development, which also has to be balanced by utilities and all of that. We look at the orange area, excuse me, the brown, or the, what color is that? The dark area, the dark blue or the black area is the state lands. The orange area is federal, mostly BLM, so a lot of that will be retained as open space holdings. And then you see the green kind of teal is local parks, so you can see the White Tank Park. And so that's what we look at, and we talk to all of those important stakeholders. Next slide. Another thing that we're looking at in existing conditions is what is the population in the area, what are the projections? And you can see, in 2020, the population was 391, nearly 392,000, 9% of the county in total. You can see that the area has, and this is not unexpected, a bit of a higher growth rate at 5% compared to the 2% of the overall county, and not really perceptible by the human eye, but it's a little bit higher density within this area than in the greater county. Population is projected to double by the year 2050, so you can see on the right-hand side, it goes to 874. We know all of this, but what do we do to accommodate that? So now, next slide. This map is the future land use map that we consider a base land use map or a composite land use map. And the reason we call it that is because it contains the land uses from the 2000 area plan, as amended over the last 20 years, and the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, so the rural development area. So important things to look at in this area, this map will likely, I don't want to say will, but will likely change as we bring it back to this Commission, based upon the information and the analysis that we're doing, and, you know, what these land uses and the vision of this area should be, needs to be, according to community, according to reality and practicality with utilities and that sort of thing. So we're, yes, ma'am? Absolutely. And Vice Chair and Member, Montoya. So the light blue, and I'll explain all the colors, and I apologize, but the light blue are the lands within the high noise and accident potential zones of Luke Air Force Base and Luke Auxiliary. And those areas, as you know, are regulated by the state, and so there's specific uses that can go within those areas. So we denote them on the map as military compatible. They will stay that way, those will not change. Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. And, yes, and so the rural area on that map is 50%. That's the kind of the light tan color or the beige. Open spaces is the green color. So you can see that nearly 75% or over 75% currently is in a very low density, if not non-developable, land use designation. We're talking land use designation, it's not zoning, per se. So this plan, you know, may or may not accommodate that population with that kind of density, but you also have to understand that there are cities within this area that will accommodate a lot of that population. So what needs to change in that area? We look at that as the population needs to double. Another 10% of that area is that orange color, that's residential, and that is the Sun Cities. You have other master plans within that area, so some suburban-type residential, as well as the non-residential, including the military compatible, the industrial mixed-use and commercial, which are designated, you can hardly see it on this map, but there's some additional non-residential and commercial within the master plan communities as well. So looking at that base map and thinking, okay, population is going to double by 2050, what's reasonable to accommodate within this area? We're dealing with landowners that would like highest and best use, but we're also dealing with, you know, the services that the county has to provide, so we need to balance all of that out. Any questions, any other questions on that? Did I miss anything, county staff? Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Wanted to talk to you just real briefly about some of the recaps of the two community meetings we have. In long-range planning, visionary planning, it's so vital and important, it's statutorily required to have community participation, but it's also a best practice. This is a community-oriented plan. We, as planners, can write these plans, draft them out, and they're meaningless if the community's not involved. So as Adam went through the strategies of what we've done, we've gotten the community involved early on, and I wanted to give you a little bit of feedback on what we're hearing. The kickoff meeting on July 19th, this recap also includes results from the initial Project Advisory Committee meeting, as well as results from the questionnaire one that is still online right now until the end of today. So you can see that we are hearing, on the first meeting, we had about 25 folks in attendance, but there's been at least, I want to say at least 100 respondents on the questionnaire at this point, and we've had a PAC meeting as well. So by and large, we're hearing in terms of top reasons why people like to live, work, and recreate in this area is the space, open space. We love the peaceful living, we love the dark skies, rural open space, we moved here for retirement, we love it, we love it, we love it. Yes, we understand that there's growth potential, and we understand that that needs to happen to accommodate, there's housing shortages, we all, we understand that, but please protect what we love in this area. So we're hearing a lot of that. Top issues or constraints, so the focus of this questionnaire and this part of the process was on issues and constraints, you know, what are people concerned about? Water, water's in the news, you know, are we going to have enough water to do what we want to do? Certainly, are we going to have enough water to develop? You know, so we need answers to that. You know, we have traffic congestion as it is, as, you know, as things develop, and maybe we're overpopulated, we're hearing a little bit of that, but as we develop, how is that going to, how are we going to smartly develop and alleviate some of those situations? So infrastructure is important, water, solar transit as well, we've heard some transit in West Valley. How are we going to get that into the West Valley? So next slide. As we've started to go into this next phase of community engagement, we're looking at guiding principles, themes that we're hearing out of the community, themes that we're getting out of the PAC, themes that we're getting hopefully out of zipper and Commission, and members that are engaged in this process. So the existing plan has a set of guiding principles that's on the webpage, I'm not going to go over that, but we're also looking at what are the themes that we're starting to hear. You can see at this last meeting on August 24th, we had it in person, and we had, I think, 57 people, members of the public that attended that. We will also launch questionnaire two, which will launch on September 1st, which will contain some of these questions as well. These are things that people want to retain in the area. Maybe they're guiding principles, maybe they work into goals, we're not exactly sure at this point, but you can see the high percentages here. We asked folks, are scenic corridors views, open spaces, should those be protected? Absolutely, 100%, everybody, yes, yes, yes. How do we do that? Not sure yet, you know, there's constraints, and there's property owner rights and stuff like that, we understand that. Light pollution should be limited to protect the dark skies as much as we can out in this area, it's beautiful. This is a little controversial, but we're hearing significantly that, you know, we want lower density and less intense development. That should be encouraged. Alternatively, we're hearing from the home builders and the state land that, no, if we can develop and we have the utilities, we should be able to develop, and there's a housing shortage, et cetera. So, you know, we got to balance that out. Coordination should take place with ADOT and Department of Transportation to improve the congested dangerous intersections, of course, we know that, 97%. Coordination with the cities and towns, please continue to do that, so that we can maintain buffers around existing rural areas, so that we can have good coordination with the retail and commercial out here, those are not on there, but we ask those questions, too. And then there's a significant interest in protecting development around Luke Air Force Base and ensuring that development continues to be compatible, not only within the high noise and accident potential zones, but those areas that fan out from Luke Air Force Base that Luke is also concerned about. That's what we're hearing. So we would encourage this Commission and all of your circles, promote these questionnaires, promote the website, get the word out to give us input on this plan. If we could, as planners, we'd love one for one, you know, there are 391-plus people in this area, we'd love to hear from every single person. We're not going to hear from every single person, but we want a great representation, so please help us get the word out. Next slide, and most of this we've covered, so I'm going to go over it fairly quickly, and we'll open it up for questions. Again, we're going to post that online. Today is the last day for the first questionnaire. We will close that at the end of the day, we'll post the second online, that'll be live through September. And we have a lot of outreach mechanisms that we're getting the word out for that questionnaire. As Adam mentioned, we are doing working drafts on the chapters, those will start coming in for county review and for stakeholder review in September. We have the third community meeting, and this came out of the community input that we were getting. This was not a meeting that was originally planned, but it was very important to get to hear from the rural communities. And so we're going out to Morristown Elementary School in the evening, 5:00 PM, to try to hear, and we've heard some individuals, but we want to hear from that community as well, and what are their concerns. Third PAC meeting will be at the end of September, early October, to talk about the draft plan, the guiding principles that are coming out, some of the goals and policies. We will have that public review draft out in October. That will be announced, that will go out, that'll be posted on the website, so we want people to review that, tell us if we've hit the mark or not. So please review that, take a look at it, if there's any concerns that you have, please contact myself, or Adam is all over the webpage. Fourth community meeting will be, here's the plan, this will be a virtual community meeting, so it will be broadcasted out for folks to say, here we are, again, here's the plan, here's how you look at it, please give us input on that, and then we'll go through that legislative process. We'll come back to this body as a Planning and Zoning Commission, we'll ask for your recommendation for your input on the draft plan, and then we'll take that on to the Board of Supervisors and ask for their adoption by a resolution. So with that, I think we're on to questions. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Obviously, we have county staff here, and I really thank you for your time and any input that you might have.
Thank you very much, Sharon and staff, much appreciated on that in-depth presentation. So if any members of the Commission do have any questions for Terry or for other members of the staff? Yes, Commissioner Montoya?
Yes, I have a question. Can you go back to the last line? Yes. So for the fourth community meeting in October, can you get that date out to the members of the Commission? I'm interested in, you know, just hearing what the public has to say.
Absolutely. I'm looking at Adam, scrolling notes, but we will absolutely do that.
Right now, we'll make sure that gets out. Excellent, thank you very much. Just a couple preliminary questions I have. First question, so water was like briefly touched on, and I know that was something that some of the respondents had touched on, too. Is, and this will show a little bit of my ignorance, but is some of this, how much of this plan area is within the Phoenix Active Management Area, AMA, if we know?
That is a good question. Chairman Mitchell, I'd have to look at the map to say for certain, but I would say a significant portion of it is. I know as you get out into the Buckeye area, there's I know as you get out into the Buckeye area, there's, it's not, but I would say, and Adam or Matt, do you know the answer?
Almost the entire plan.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I figured.
Possibly edges of the Whispering Ranch, Walter Mine Road area.
Okay. That's what I figured. I was just curious and, you know, I know with all the discussions recently about impacting for 100-year supply and everything, so I was curious how that impacted. Thank you for that. Next question I have might be more directed towards staff. How will this impact this amendment? Let's say it moves forward and the new plan is adopted this December. How would that impact individuals who have current cases, either rezoning cases or other cases within this area? I understand it's not a regulatory, but I would just be curious how that might impact.
Thank you for that question, Chairman Mitchell. So mainly, it would, right now, there's a lot of the, we don't know yet how that's going to impact it, because we haven't gone through the process yet. But I can tell you this, a lot of the policies that we have already in place within the White, Tank, Grand Avenue area plan that currently exists are likely to remain when, when that occurs. And like I said, these are guidelines. They can be accepted through the recommendation of the commission or not, of what staff provides, at least in our, in our staff reports. And that goes the same for the Board of Supervisors. But what we do with the community feedback is we look at policies and policy development within the plan, of which there's a myriad to cover both growth and, and protection of things, of people in rural communities love. And then, I think, did you have more to say?
And I guess to that point, thank you so much, Adam. The reason why I'm asking is, I'm trying to think, if somebody has like an application for a rezone or something else that they're pursuing a change in this area, and then the new plan changes, you know, maybe the land use designation for that, are they going to be penalized as they're kind of moving through their, their, their application? I would assume that there would be some type of flexibility, understanding that this is non-regulatory plan, but.
So Mr. Chairman, typically, as you approve a plan, there's a resolution that goes along with that. Usually, within that, there'll be statements such as, general, our committee plan amendments that are under advisement or rezonings would be compared against the existing plan.
Okay.
However, as we move forward with this going forward, I would also anticipate that as we gave our staff analysis, we would also inform the commission and the Board of Updates to any policies that would affect that.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense, and I know that. Nice try, you know?
Here comes their attorney.
Tom's not wrong. Under.
Say that again.
If they're major amendments, they would be, have to be handled by the December meeting, so they would be processed probably before the change came into place. The only time it could really affect a specific application would be if a rezoning occurred. The zoning ordinance has to be compatible with the, or consistent, actually, with the plan, but that's on the Board of Supervisors. So until or unless the board changes the actual underlying zoning, and that would really probably only occur if there were suggested changes in the land use designations. And I'm not sure that we're at that point yet.
Okay.
So generally, it wouldn't impact someone who is applying for a specific application for a specific piece of property. But if, if it, if the zoning changes and you don't have an approval, you are bound by the new zone.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that, and I would expect with how, how well the county works with applicants throughout the development process, that maybe there, if somebody is taking a project through and the county has an inkling that that might be changing, right, related to the particular piece of land they're, they're looking to rezone or whatever it is, that that might be shared so that the applicant can try to, you know, adjust. That absolutely makes sense. I have some questions regarding like density and things like that. So on this slide, for example, I understand it says 10% SEF, which I assume is single-family residential. So how much, I know we don't have the percentage here, but is the single-family residential the kind of like the mustard, orange, or yellow?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The, in, a lot of that single-family residential is represented by Sun City, Sun City West, and generally falls into the category of three to five dwelling units per acre.
Okay. And is there any, is there any designation or any land use, proposed land use designation on the map for multifamily at this point?
I believe that would fall under a category of a higher, like such as 10 to 12 dwelling unit per acre density, that, which would be high-density residential. We are not yet through the process of assigning land use designations. That will occur with the working drafts and the drafts of the land use element, but those will generally conform to the land use designations that are found within the Vision 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and there is a category for higher-density residential.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. And I know it can be kind of a touchy subject, right? And especially a lot of folks that live out here enjoy like having the space and all those types of things, but there's also the reality, right, that the population is kind of exploding in multifamily, or kind of a thought about multifamily, where that could be wisely placed, right, in a way that doesn't, is not incompatible with, with some of the more rural or a larger lot designations out here. So appreciate that. Thank you so much, Teri. But is there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Montoya?
Yes, I have a question. What do you consider to be, you know, this, this task that you have is enormous in terms of trying to get public participation to get, to listen to and hear the voices of the community from different sectors? So what do you consider to be an appropriate number of people participating to sort of, you know, solidify the, the whole project?
Sure.
Where you have really leaned into trying to reach as many people, to get as many folks to participate and hear what they have to say?
Thank you for that, Chairman and Commissioner or Committee Member Montoya. That's, that's the crux of, of the bane of our existence, if you will, in a lot of ways. Really, from a planning standpoint, I would ideally love a one-for-one, as I said. What we typically hear is a representative, it's about 10%. So by and large, across any process that you do, in most communities, it's about a 10%. This, the questionnaires that we're doing are not, we don't call them surveys, they're not significantly significant, but we, as part of the strategy, in state law, not promote mandates, that we have a very diverse strategy so that we try to get opportunity for folks all over the planning area, in different venues. We have materials being translated into Spanish. We try to get as much as we can. We can't, we can't force that horse to drink, but we certainly do try our hardest and get the word out. But it's typically about 10% of the population.
Thank you, Commissioner Montoya. Yes?
Vice Chair Mitchell and Member Montoya, I'd like to add a little bit to that. The citizen participation plan that we worked out with the consultant and the flexibility that was within that plan, this kind of speaks to a lot of what your question was. As we talked about the best ways to reach out to the community, it was felt that virtual meetings would be that best way, given how spread out and rural this area is. As we held that first virtual meeting, we heard a lot from the rural communities stating that they would prefer that there would be an in-person meeting out in the rural area. So that in-person meeting that scheduled in September is a direct result of the outreach effort and the flexibility that was within that plan to try to reach as many people in the way that they felt most comfortable in, in interacting with us and providing feedback.
I'd just like to add a comment, not related to this, but I just really want to thank the county and the staff for undergoing this, this project, because I grew up in that area. And so I know it very, very well. I drive to Surprise every Saturday to visit my elderly mom. And I have family that live there, and so I see the growth. I mean, every weekend, you can see something new, like the going. And, you know, you think about, is this sustainable? And so it can only be sustainable if we think about how we're going to plan that growth. And so for that reason, you know, I really appreciate what you're doing, because I know that for some folks out there who don't know about land use and, you know, don't participate in these types of forums, you know, they have no clue, but they're, but they're scared. And so the fact that the county can go out there and say, look, we want to plan this growth, but we need your voice, that speaks a lot to how the, the county is going about doing its work, respecting and listening to what folks have to say. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Montoya. I believe Commissioner Arnett would also like to speak. Commissioner Arnett?
Have I figured out my technical problems here? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Very good. Well, thank you. And I think some of my questions have been answered, so thank you, Mr. Chair, for just giving me a minute. So a lot of my comments and questions were just how this affects some of the larger landowners in this area, whoever that is, with half of this being private. This is a big deal, right? As we do large chunks of land, you know, I know that's not to the zoning point right now, but how would that affect? But I think, I think that will work itself out. We'll update the reports. There can be some, you know, CAP amendments and different, anyway, I'm comfortable where we're at. So I'll just say this, I'm reminded of how fortunate we are in this county to have this team working on this, as I looked at that, that, that group of talented people navigating through this large, I mean, it's just a massive, massive project. And as we're kind of on, we're not close to the end here, there's a lot more work to be done, and they've done so much. So, so thank you very much, Teri. So nice to see you again. It's been a long time. It's good to have you back in this project as well.
Thank you.
So, so thank you, thank you, everyone, for your efforts. That, this represents a lot of effort. And, you know, when we hear cases, we're, we're trying to prevent a lot of this heartache 10, 20 years down the line. So I'm glad we have, I'm reminded that we're in great hands in the county, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnett. Yes, and.
Chairman Mitchell, just, just as, just in response to that, and, and thank you, Commissioner Arnett. I was, I was excited to see your name and good to, good to hear your voice. I would say a couple of things to that, that we are reaching out to large property holdings. We've talked with Toyota Proving Grounds. We've gotten their input. We've done an interview with those folks. We're, we're talking with District Four representatives and developers and zoning attorneys. But also, if this commission, if you, if you guys have any input into that, or think, or people that we should talk to, or entities that we should talk to, please get that to Adam, and we will be happy to reach out to those folks as well and get them involved in the process. So the, again, the more the word gets out and the more that we can contact, the better. So thank you for that, and good to hear your voice again, Commissioner Arnett.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnett. Thank you, Teri, very much. Well said, I think, Commissioner Arnett. This is really an all, all, all hands, the more people that, that are able, the more stakeholders that are able to contribute to this, I think ultimately make a better product. So thank you very much to the team for, for working on this. Any other comments from the commission? I know we'll have to formally, I think, open a public forum. I don't see anybody here, but any other comments from the commission first? Okay, then we will open the public forum. If there's anybody, it doesn't appear that there's anybody in person. Is there anybody on the go-to webinar that wishes to speak? Okay, I'm seeing no's. Okay, well, we will close that public forum. Anybody from the commission wish to make a final comment? Or any questions? Okay, well, there's no action required from, from the commission. Thank you very much, Teri, and the rest of the team for presenting on this. Looking forward to hearing more about how this progresses and, of course, speaking again in November, I believe, right? So, okay, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to regular agenda item number two. It's the rural lot coverage. And I would request, Darren, I believe you're going to be presenting on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, CA 2023 003 is a text amendment to the county zoning ordinance to increase the maximum lot coverage permitted in both the rural 70 and rural 190 zoning districts. By way of background, all of the lot coverages in the other rural and residential zoning districts have been increased over the years. Most of those were increased by just a flat 10%. So for instance, rural 43 zoning district had a 15% lot coverage. That was increased to 25%. That was across the board from rural 43 up to the higher intensity up to R5. They were all increased. What wasn't increased was rural 190 and rural 70. The difference between these two zoning districts and the other residential districts is that they tend to be more remote locations without emergency fire protection. Therefore, we believe it's appropriate to have a lower lot coverage. And lot coverage, real quickly, is the maximum percentage of a lot that can be covered under roof, aggregate roof coverage over the whole lot. It's not impervious surface areas, it's just areas under roof. And that includes the main building and all out buildings. So the idea of allowing for a modest increase, rural 190 from 5% total maximum lot coverage to 10%, and in rural 70 from 10% to 15%, we believe that falls under the mantra of the least amount of regulation necessary to ensure the public health, safety, welfare. It's, it's, it's less lot coverage, it's less increase, but it rolls along with the ongoing process for the last 13 years that we've had at unincorporated county of regulatory reform, lessening regulatory burden in the favor of the regulated community. I know a lot of people think government is constantly getting more overreach and more overreach. That is not the case with planning and zoning in Maricopa County. In fact, there have been about 80 regulatory process reforms and improvements over the last 14 years, all of them lessening regulatory burden in the favor of the regulated community. And this follows that. But again, it's a very minor increase in the maximum area that can be put under roof in those isolated rural zoning districts because of the lack of fire protection. But we believe, again, that it can be accommodated and we can maintain the public health, safety. Because you don't have a quorum today, there can be no vote to initiate. We'll roll this over to a future P&amp;Z hearing and have it on that. At the latest, October 5th is when this will be scheduled for public hearing for your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. To date, there is no known opposition. Only one person attended the public stakeholder meeting in favor. And that's all I have for it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Darren. Any questions from the commission? And I have a quick question, of course. Sorry. So you had mentioned that in some of the other, you know, like RU43 and stuff, that there's been a deregulation or increasing the, the maximum lot coverage. And how, how long of a period has that been occurring? Like when, if you remember off the top of your head, has it been over the last 10 years?
I want to say it's, we, we did rural 43 about eight years ago, and we did them all about six years ago.
Okay.
Except for these two. There's been, there's been no issue.
Yeah.
The fact is, that in combination with the other regulatory forms that allow detached regulate, detached accessory structures to encroach into the, not just the rear yard 30%, but also the side yard, 30% required rear sides, and the fact that we've deleted from all zoning districts the minimum distance between buildings, that's just regulated to building code. Those things have, have increased the potential, the flexibility in design on a, say, a typical one-acre lot, where about 29% more of the lot areas is available for different types of improvement. So it's, it's cut down on the number of variances over the last decade to where we, we have fewer than 80, sometimes fewer than 50, variances a year, and there used to be when I started here about 30.
Wow, okay. Well, thank you for that background. I think that's really useful. Obviously, we don't have any, any action required today, but again, just want to throw it out to the com- But again, just want to throw it out to the commission if there's any other kind of final questions or thoughts about that. I really appreciate that insight, Darren. Just as a formality, I guess, we'll open the public forum. Anybody, anybody wish to speak on this one, Rachel? Okay, nobody, nobody really pressing to speak on this one in the audience either. Okay, we'll close that public forum. No action required from the commission today on, on that. Again, really appreciate Darren with the update. Was that a, a comment from somebody online or? Rachel? Okay, I'm, I'm going crazy. Are there any closing items from staff? Yeah?
Chairman, yes, sir. We will be scheduling for you, I'm sorry, we will be scheduling for you an e-session on September 14th. It'll, it'll immediately follow your public hearing. I can't go into detail about the subject matter of the e-session. Although as a technical matter, for those people that attend online, we will send out two separate meeting invites so that there can be no one attending online that's outside the executive.
Okay. And you said that's September 14th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Much appreciated. Any other comments from staff? Okay, then I think we are, are good to wrap up here. We will adjourn at 10:25. Thank you.